All right, it is six thirty-two. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Champagne County Board Committee of the whole. Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Portato. Goss.
Present.
Hanauer Friedman. Harper.
Here.
Ingram.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Lockshin, here. Michaels.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rogers.
Present.
Sexton. Store.
Present.
Straub. Taylor. Thorson.
Here.
Vanage Theronat.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Covert.
Present.
Esri.
Here.
Patterson.
Here. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda in addenda? Taylor. Lockshin. All right, does anybody have any additions or alterations? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have the approval of the minutes from February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved Ingram.
Ingram, Diane. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next we have public participation. I have Julie Campbell. Yeah, and just so you know, we have on the screen, it's a five-minute limit.
Okay, all right. My name is Julie Campbell. I'm here to defend the Eighth Amendment and the mental health of those that are incarcerated at the Champagne County Jail in the past and in the future and currently. The Eighth Amendment came into play in seventeen ninety-one, and it is about excessive bail and cruel and unusual punishment. It has nothing to do with the Safety Act. It is a, the purpose of it is to make sure people show up for court. It has turned into a ransom, and people are being held hostage. As far as the mental health part of it, this is Elizabeth, I mean, this is Jac- Jaclyn Smith. The first picture is when Julia Reitz came into office, and this is when her last arrest this year was. She's been arrested ninety-six times, and they publicly humiliated her and put it all out there. There's something wrong with our system. There's something wrong with us as a society that this woman has not gotten the help that she needs. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed, and Julia Reitz should be embarrassed as well. Then there's this gentleman. His name is Noah. His last name is R.A.I.C.E.S. He was arrested on attempted murder on February twenty, I mean, February eighth, two thousand twenty-three. He was let go on his own recognizance. He was recently arrested in another county for home invasion of a seventy-eight-year-old woman. Then there's this gentleman. His name is Steed Cross. He's been arrested five times in the last twenty months. He shoved blankets and stuff down into his toilet in his cell at one point, and he was not given any water. There was no water offered to him. His water was shut off. My son is currently incarcerated there, and he called me and told me that he witnessed this man drinking toilet water. I immediately called the N double A C P, and they took it, handled it. Then there's my son. This is him and his oldest son. This is the day before he found his thirty-five-day-old daughter, with her head stuck between the headboard and mattress, with blood coming out of her nose and blood pooling in her face because her mother had slept with her drunk and high and smothered her and killed her. He's not been right since. He's incarcerated because he came in on suicide watch. They left the phone on at the county jail. They charged him, the state's attorney's office charged him fourteen individually times. They could have shut the phone off at any time. Today, in bookings where they, in the suicide watch, the phones are only on during rec time. Six months ago, they took my son to court, and they took away all of his phone privileges. The only way that I can see him is by paying thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents to visit, visit, visit him on video or drive forty-five minutes and see him on video here at the jail. He was one of the hunger strikers. Then there's this young man. His name is Troy Carter. He was arrested when he was sixteen years old. I do not have his record because he was arrested as a minor. His mom is here with me today. He's being treated as an adult, and I don't know why. These two were diagnosed by the psychiatrist that worked for the Champagne County with a disability that is acknowledged by the American Disability Act and Social Security Administration. The jail is not compliant. The ADA is also for inmates. It's for all humans that have, have a disability. The jail is not compliant. Again, the jail is not compliant. This is why this gentleman keeps coming in and out. This is why this woman is still suffering. I've taken some notes on some other things. Medication for psych meds are done via telehealth with a nurse practitioner, not a psychiatrist. There are inmates who have been on oral antibiotics for three months. You get immune to that after a while. When a psychological evaluation is needed for an inmate's case, there's one psychiatrist for the entire jail, and it delays their cases up to six months. There are inmates who have been strapped to chairs. Captain Bogus admits to this. I have it on recording stating it is necessary to get inmates to comply. There are inmates who have slit their wrists while on suicide watch, hung themselves, and correctional officers have found them unconscious, also while on suicide watch. During the pandemic, the population of the Champagne County Jail was a hundred and forty inmates. As of the sheriff's recent annual report, there are three hundred and twenty-five in the Champagne County Jail and a hundred and seventy-five additional inmates in two other Illinois counties. Towards the end of two thousand twenty-two, the Public Defender's Office had nine assistant public defender positions that were vacant. This was an opportunity for Julia Reitz to manipulate the judicial system in her favor to force inmates who are financially, or financially have to utilize the Public Defender's Office. They're jailed for extended lengths of times, shows aggravated evidence for high bonds, make plea offers more attractive to these inmates. This in turn gives the public the perception that Julia Reitz is hard on crime. Not true. She is hard on the mentally ill and the poor. Recently, Elizabeth Pollak was hired to lead the Public Defender's Office. Elizabeth Pollak is one of the people that I respect most in this world. She will make a difference. However, she has walked into a tsunami, and there will be a long road ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Jane McClintock?
Hello, thank you. And thank you, Julie, for giving the human and personal side of this. I think in the wake of, you know, just hearing these devastating stories about these young people, you're not seeing their family members in person for years and long incarceration times. I wanted to try to understand a little bit better what was going on. You know, there's been a lot of speculation. We all know that we've had vacancies in the Public Defender's Office, and we have a sense that even though crime rates are falling precipitously, our jail population is not going down. What's going on? You know, how long are people in jail right now? You know, why are they there? So I went through the, the daily jail report, which is a very difficult document to do any kind of analysis on, which is not what I'm here to talk about, but, so this is just a point in time. This is last Friday. And there are about, you'll see from the paper, there's over half of the people that, and I attempted to my best effort to pull out anyone who was serving a sentence. So these should all be people who are pre-trial, so accused of a crime but not convicted of anything. And over half of them have been in jail over a hundred and twenty days. I looked at a hundred and twenty days because that, by Illinois statute, the speedy trial law, which the number's on there if you want to check it out, that's the time at which these cases should be brought to trial unless there are extenuating circumstances or unless they're delayed for some reason by the defense. So I asked Julia Reitz, you know, what, why are so many people in jail for so long? With, you know, it's, I think, I'm sorry, I gave out all my pieces of paper, but you can see it's about twenty percent that are in jail for over two years. So, yeah, nineteen percent that have been over a year and eleven people who have been waiting for trial for over two years, and one person who's been waiting for trial for over three years. And what, so I wanted to ask two questions. There's actually many questions we could want to ask about this. But first of all, why are these people in jail? What are they accused of? So I went through that list, which there's no sort of particular order to the, the way that the, the crimes that a person is accused of are tabulated. And of course, one instance could result in multiple charges, and often does. So I've classified them by the most serious offense. So let's say if there was a murder that occurred with a gun, you know, after someone was drunk driving, I just put it as murder. So the one thing that I think is a big takeaway here, and maybe is a big opportunity, I would argue is a big opportunity for some more logical, maybe plea bargains or agreements to try to catch up with this backlog, is that thirty-one point six of these people who have been in jail over a hundred and twenty days are accused only of having a firearm. So for instance, you know, not having a Foid card or having prior felony convictions and having a firearm, but not having done anything with the firearm. So on the next page, I also want to point to another, another issue that I think is very salient to the crisis that we are currently facing at the jail, which is that the state's attorney's budget is like massively larger than the public defender's budget. But the caseload for the public defender is massively larger than the state's attorney. And this is not to mention that the state's attorney's office has all the police officers essentially working to assist in investigative work. So, you know, if we, not even mentioning those, that, the assistance from that, we have a really, a huge disparity in the budget. And I think this is, well, clearly, this is something that you guys, as the county board, could make a difference on. So I don't want to take too much time. I know I'm running out. But I think the bottom line here is that the public defender, the budget dollars per case that they are responsible for is two hundred and sixty-six. The state's attorney's office, bottom line, seven hundred and six dollars per case. It's not a fair fight. It's not fair for people accused of crimes, and it's no wonder that the people in the jail for months and years having minimal contact with their public defenders, having their cases pushed back. It's no wonder they're frustrated. It's no wonder they're angry, and it's no wonder that they're desperate. So please make some changes and, you know, let's make, make our justice system more humane and functional here in Champagne County. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wish to make a comment? All right, seeing none, moving on to communications. Do any board members have any communications today? Not seeing any. I did have a correspondence that was requested that I read from a member of the public. This is a letter from Claudia Lynn Hoff from Champagne County Healthcare Consumers. Dear county board members, on behalf of the Champagne County healthcare consumers, we urge you to stand firm in opposition of the Rothers' request to sell the former county nursing home to a drug and alcohol rehab provider. Our county simply cannot afford to lose yet another nursing home. The Rothers have already sold two other nursing homes in Champagne County, and the properties where those were located are being converted to apartments or condominiums. The fact of the matter is that Champagne County residents are being sent away from the county to be cared for in out-of-town nursing homes and rehab centers, which is a hardship to the patients and their loved ones. One has to ask, if the census is so low at the Rothner-owned university rehab, why are patients being sent out of the county for care if they could be provided at university rehab? Is it because university rehab isn't accepting enough patients and therefore driving their census lower in order to make the case to sell the nursing home? Or is it that fewer hospital providers are placing patients at university rehab because of quality of care issues? These are questions that must be asked of the Rothers. If they are allowed to sell university rehab to a non-nursing home provider, our county will have lost three nursing homes under the Rothers in the last few years. This is decimating our county's stock of nursing home beds, just as our population, like the nation's, is increasingly aging and in need of nursing and rehab services. Please do not allow them to exit the covenant that they entered into as condition for the purchase of the former county nursing home. The covenant was developed for the protection of county residents, and county residents still need this protection. When loved ones are transferred to facilities that are out of town, this creates a hardship for them, for their families and friends. Thirty minutes or forty minutes away may not seem like a long distance, but when a loved one is in a nursing home, their families and friends need to try to visit at least once a day or every other day to make sure that their loved one is receiving the appropriate care and for their well-being. If the Rothers are allowed to exit the covenant, our county's healthcare infrastructure will be forever transformed for the worse, affecting generations of county residents. If the Rothers want to sell, they should improve quality of care and their census, and then try to attract another nursing home operator. Thank you. Claudia Lynn Hoff, Champagne County Healthcare Consumers Executive Director. Mr. Store?
Thank you. I think I'd like to report that the Economic Development Corporation issued a press release. I don't know how widely it was circulated among the county board members, but they are now starting their small business microloans through the Justine Peterson organization, loans up to fifty thousand dollars to start. And they get business development support, expert support through the. This is one of the four projects that we funded through the American Rescue Plan. Another one, two of them through the Champagne Chamber of Commerce are, are going to be coming along. One of them will be for people, another microloan program for people who don't qualify for this one and for virtual or online selling, to teach people how to do that. And the, the fourth will be for helping people who were adversely affected by COVID. Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
Hi, thank you. I just had a correspondence from, oops, I just lost the email. From Gerald Schill, sorry about that. I'm trying to go back to the beginning. I'm sorry.
Ms. Michaels?
Basically, he was just saying to reconsider letting the nursing home go for sale, basically. He was expressing safety concerns, issues, you know, within the nursing home, and some of my same issues feeling for the people in the residence, and so he just expressed that through the email, so.
Would you want me to read it in, Samantha? I can, if you want me to, because I believe we all got it. But I could read it in real quick.
I would like for it to be read.
If you want me to, Samantha. Okay, I'll do that. He didn't make it clear that it was sent to necessarily everyone. It looks like it could maybe just be to you individually. Dear Champagne County Board Member, hello, my name is Jero Schill. I may, may have butchered that. I live in Champagne, and I'm a police officer for a local police department. I served as the, as the security director at University Rehabilitation Center from July two thousand nineteen through December twenty twenty-two. I have a degree in criminal justice and have worked in various healthcare settings, including O S F, as well as the criminal justice system. I was originally hired because there were quite a few safety and security issues at the facility. During my time at U R C, I saw countless changes and witnessed the facility go through many hardships. The facility changed administrators two different times and multiple directors of nursing in the time I was there. The current administrator and D O N left a year after my arrival. Another came in for a year, then the previous administrator and D O N returned and are currently serving. At one point, the facility incurred over forty state health code violation tags, including three IJs, immediate jeopardy. Immediate jeopardies. The issues I dealt with directly included domestic violence, assaults, outside disturbances, drugs, and staff sleeping on the job and care. Staff leaving for hours while on duty, to name a few. I believe the county doesn't have full knowledge of the situation at hand, the entirety of the problems the facility faces is vast, to say the least. While I understand the board wanting to hold the current owner accountable for their purchase agreement, you must understand the problems within the facility have remained, for the most part, quiet and internal without the awareness of the general public. What you should know is the facility has approximately seventy-five patients currently. That number has sharply declined over the past year. If I recall correctly, the facility had over a hundred and twenty patients just six months ago. While most facilities face staffing issues, U R C is always extremely short-staffed to a crisis level. Recently, I was advised that the directors of maintenance and housekeeping had to fill in his C N As. It would be difficult for me, and I would have trouble believing if you or other, another board member had a family member there, you would feel, feel okay with that. Not to mention the lack of interaction and activity the patients receive at the facility. There is literally not much for them to do there except look out the window. It is a very sad situation indeed, and was extremely hard for me to see daily. I can relate to the board's anger regarding, regarding the curtain, owner's request to negate their contractual obligation. However, again, there are factors I don't think most people are aware of. While the facility has been made more visually attractive inside over recent months, for the time I was there, it was in shambles. As far as I'm aware, it still needs a new roof, along with many other updates, and staffing is the most critical area. I understand how it can sometimes be easy to view things from an outside perspective and let our emotions get the better of us when the vulnerable population is at task. However, the business isn't on the course, most may think or see. What I, what I'm trying to ask for is, what I'm trying to ask is for the board to consider the entirety of the situation at U R C based on facts and see it from an objective and neutral perspective. I know your position is a tough one. As a concerned resident and former employee, I feel an obligation to share with you that I fear if the county continues to deny the sale of the facility, it will continue to rapidly decline in multiple ways and eventually close this year regardless. Patients will be gone without any plan, jobs will be lost, and the building will sit vacant, inviting vagrancy, vandalism, or worse. On the other hand, you have the power to change that and provide guidance for it to go differently. If the board were to consider the sale, it could serve as a better option. A needed service could be provided to help the county. A reasonable placement plan could be put in place for current residents. Taxes could be paid, and the new facility would need many of the same positions and staff services and potentially retain many jobs. To me, that sounds like a win. In conclusion, I hope you will consider all options and reconsider the possibility of allowing the sale. Perhaps a trip to speak with current staff would help in your decision. I won't go too far into the complete determination of diversity and interaction in the front offices, but it's noticeable and apparent the administrative leadership is quite, quite secluded and segregated from the online staff. It is often easy for us to tell people to fix it, then walk away and not do our share to help the situation. This is our chance and opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we're moving on to Justice and Social Services.
Thank you, Chair Patterson. First, on my agenda, we have the item A for the monthly reports are available on each department's webpage. We have probation and court services for January of twenty twenty-three. Public defender for February of twenty twenty-three. And the emergency management agency for February of twenty twenty-three. We have item B, the Rosecrans reentry financial report for January twenty twenty-three. That is informational only. And then item C, I would, it, I'd like some clarity from the county executive, if possible. It says it's a proposed amendment. Is this something that we're voting on today, or is this discussion?
I would say discussion at this point.
All right, as you can see in your packet, we have ten pages of a proposed amendment to the restrictions and covenants of the nursing home sale contract. I believe that there is a representative here. If you have any questions. But if you just want to discuss, I will take you in order. Does anybody have anything? Mr. Goss?
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear from him what the plan is because the documents, it's there, but it's not probably. It's all in legalese.
Should we get started without that, or? I think it's, again, it's very important that I be here because it's, I think there's some relevant information. Good evening. My name is Avi Rothner. I am the manager of, or William Rothner, legally, my, I'm manager of University Rehab Real Estate. Before you is, for the second time, a request to, not to sell the building, but to change the deed restriction. To be clear, of course, believe a sale would be part of the process, but we're asking for a change in the deed restriction. And we don't make this request, and we did not make this request originally lightly. We have gone through ownership of nearly three years. We have done almost everything possible, everything possible. We've tried many different initiatives. We've worked with Carl Hospital. I'll, I'll present a number of other pieces of information. And I, I think it's important to note, I, I just recall one of the first points was, you know, talking about the number of beds in, in, in the county or, or in the local area. I just looked at the publicly available cost reports, and I actually printed them out, so I'm happy to submit them to you guys if you'd like to see them and verify my information. But I took the two thousand and ten, the two thousand and fifteen, and the two thousand and twenty-one cost reports. They're publicly available. And between university, what is now university, and what was Carl, is now C U N R, and Heartland and Helia, there were six hundred and seventy-six beds available. In two thousand and ten, those four facilities, and let's assume the other facilities were full, which they weren't. Those four facilities had five hundred and sixty-one patients. By two thousand and fifteen, those facilities had four hundred and forty-seven patients, a loss of a hundred and fourteen patients. And by two thousand and twenty-one, or the year of two thousand and twenty-one, Heartland and Helia were both closed, and there was a total of two hundred and twenty-three patients at the buildings. Again, thank you. Publicly available information, so I, I'm all for access, but I, I, the access unfortunately, unfortunately, and I really believe it's unfortunate, it's most unfortunate for me, is, is not necessary, number one. Number two is, I actually have a letter here from the other large facility, C U N R, which was a Carl facility. So I think there's two points that I want to make there. I don't believe we would love to sell the building to Carl. I think that would be a, excuse me, a great outcome. Carl left the nursing home business a number of years ago, so I don't think they're getting back into that. But I do have a letter here from the attorney for C U N R where he states that, of course, subject to residents having a payer source and a diagnosis that's medically appropriate for their facility, they're happy to take ninety patients, as, as the second letter read, there are approximately seventy-four patients in our building right now. So that all of those patients could be accounted for within six miles of the, this, of our facility, let alone the vacancies that are in, in other, other facilities as well. I know there's a concern about staff. And my client would be interested in hiring staff from university rehab to supplement my client's current staffing in various areas, including nursing and clinical staff. Staff hiring, of course, is contingent upon background checks and interviews. So I, I'm all for access, but unfortunately, the market and the world has changed. I thought, I mean, if I'm, if I know what I'm talking about, which I might not, we thought there would be a floor in terms of occupancy, and we never would have imagined that you could go from five hundred and sixty-one patients to two hundred and twenty-three patients in a span of eleven years. And I think it's important to note that I didn't come here lightly. And I think it's important to note that I didn't come here lightly. I have been the largest donor to public access and to healthcare in this entire county. And I mean, unless, I don't know, unless there's somebody who's given, you know, ten million dollars to the hospital in the last couple of years. I actually have the cost reports and my financial statements, which I'm happy to share with anybody. And I have a number of wire transfers that I personally wired into the operating accounts of the facility. So our, our group has lost millions of dollars, which is fine, they're gone. And, but we've done this all in the name of access and keeping the facility open. We have tried many different things to turn around the facility. Again, I have a letter from Carl Hospital's Population Health Director that says that we are their number-one referral source and that we are in their ACO, their accountable care organization. We're in the, you know, the group of people who they rely on and refer to. So I'm happy to share all of this, and I'm happy to share that, look, again, we can get technical, I could sell the facility. I don't need the board's permission. However, and again, I want to be very clear, I am not cajoling, I am not threatening, I am informing. And I'm sorry, the county executive is here, and if there was an attorney here, I'd be happy to discuss any of the legal aspects that are here, which I'm familiar with. But I have a buyer. This buyer has a desire to provide services. This buyer has a desire to provide services that are necessary in the county, and, but does not want the restrictive covenant. They're very happy with the building, they're very happy to provide as part of their SUP with the city. They will, which I also have a copy of, they're planning on, I believe it's a hundred and sixty jobs and an average of sixty-eight thousand dollars a person. So many of the people and the types of people that would be in our building currently, medical directors and healthcare providers, would have, could have jobs in those facilities, not to mention the fact that with an unemployment rate of six, three point six percent in this area, I'm fairly certain that all of our current employees will find jobs. But there's also a six million dollar investment that they are attempting to make. I believe the second letter referenced our roof. It is a concern, we do have an insurance claim pending. But we have a buyer who's ready to go, who is willing to provide a service that's necessary in the county, who's going to provide economic activity, who's going to provide jobs, who's going to provide six million dollars of renovations, and the thing that they're looking for is that deed restriction gone. Again, I understand what it means. I understand all too well. I have been awake at night every two weeks because payroll is due, and there's not going to be money. I've stepped up, and I can show you repeated wires that I have sent from my personal account. I can't do that anymore. There's coming to a point where, and I can also show you, I have proof, the mortgage in the facility has not been paid in eight months. The bank will come for the building, the bank will attempt to foreclose on the building. And for those who, again, I'm informing, for those who say that there is no, there is no clause in our negotiation or agreement that says, I have to operate the facility, that I have to lose as much money as someone says, I have to keep the facility as, I have to keep the deed as a healthcare facility until whatever the date is. That's true. And if the board decides that that's the case, and the board decides that's the case, what will eventually happen is we will close the facility. The patients will all leave. Again, I have a place for them all to go, or other places. And we, of course, have to work, there's the ombudsman's office walks right in, and we have to work hand in glove with them and everyone to provide proper placement and proper care. But I will not sit here and continue to fund what is unfortunately a situation that I believe is now irreversible. And we get a point where, if I don't, I'm compromising patient safety. The electricity not being on because the bills haven't been paid, it's certainly my responsibility, but I can't allow that for a resident. Or not having staff, or not being able to pay staff, or not having agency staff because those bills have gotten too large, that's not something I'm going to deal with. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, I'm happy to submit all of this, any of it, for the record. It's all here. I think I've covered a lot of things that, you know, like I said, it's easy, and the board has been, you know, concerned with what's going on, but nobody has called, nobody has emailed me. So the board can say that they're concerned, but I'm the person, we are the people who've had to pay for all of this with our, out of our own pockets. You should know that, speaking of our own pockets, the payables, the receivables people, the consultants, clinical and operations, those all cost money. Normally, you have a facility pay a management fee, home office fee of five percent. Two, what's normally an affiliated company, and ours is an affiliated company relationship. We've taken no home office fees. I have not taken one penny in this facility. And to those who would ask, well, I know you're going to make a lot of money on this deal. So we have a contract that's, that has a non-disclosure agreement, but again, I have a mortgage statement that says that my payoff letter is, my payoff is probably ten million dollars, plus the real estate taxes that I'm sure you are aware, and I have the letter that says the taxes have been sold. Also, so plus the taxes, plus the closing costs and the tax proration, there's, there's no money at this closing that I'm going to get, there's no windfall that's available to me. And even if there was, I have ten million dollars of losses and contributions over here. So, okay, if there's money, there's a million dollars, that's, I know it's a lot of money, but my loss has gone from ten to nine, so yay for me. And if the county board was so convinced that there was millions of dollars at the end of that rainbow, I would be more than happy to make the donation of every single dollar net from that sale. If there's any leftover proceeds, you can have it. All I want is for the deed restriction to be lifted, for the sale to happen, and I need an, I need a, what do we call it, we need the conditional use permit and an SUP, so we need the county, and we will eventually need the city's approval, for the sale to go through, I won't have a bank trying to foreclose on me. The facility will be utilized, taxes will be paid, patients who aren't going to be taken care of appropriately, if we continue down this path, will be taken care of appropriately with a place for them within this community. Again, it's all here as fact. So I'm here to counter the narrative, whatever it may be. I'm here to take the criticism. But, you know, like I said, we've worked with Carl, we're a referral, we're in their ACO, or accountable care organization network. So we've done the steps, we've taken the steps, we've done the things that are necessary. Unfortunately, I mean, I can make lots of excuses, but the demographics are what they are, the results are what they are, the numbers are what they are, they're not changing. And this is the situation that we find ourselves in. And we can either move forward, or we can move forward a different way. And I, the power is completely in your hands. It's up to you, it's up to you. And I'm going to submit to whatever you do, but each of these decisions will, of course, have its own consequences. Again, I say that not to threaten, not to cajole, but just to state a fact. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to provide all of this information to anyone. Before I, sorry, before I apologize, I did reach out to almost every single county commissioner, and I do want to give a special shout out to Commissioner Sexton, who actually took my call, and, and we were able to really have a discussion about this. So thank you very much, Commissioner. Sorry, that was the other note I gave myself. You are county board members, I apologize for emailing you all as commissioners. I'm sorry, I'm used to that nomenclature somewhere else. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have Jenny, and then Stephanie.
Could you tell me that number again? You said that Champaign-Urbana Nursing and Rehab was willing to take ninety, you said ninety-something patients.
Ninety.
I just needed the number. Quick, because that leaves us with what, like?
None.
A dozen?
None.
Empty beds?
None.
No, 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 I'm not asking about patients, I'm asking how many empty beds would be left in Champaign County at that point?
Oh, so.
Maybe a dozen?
No, no. So I have a different, now, of course, it's a different math, but.
Okay.
No.
I'm looking at the two twenty-one, can we work from that, since that's what's in front of all of us?
The two, I'm sorry, just one second.
Okay.
The two twenty-one.
Okay.
I can help, I can help. Okay, so I did a little bit of math. To answer Jenny's question, if, according to the numbers you gave us, and I recognize that maybe you're working on a different set of numbers, but according to the numbers that you gave us of two twenty-one, twenty-three, if your nursing home was to close, there'd be four hundred nursing homes. If we placed everybody within county in county nursing homes, there'd be twenty-five beds. Some more math. Okay. Overall, you gave us a set of numbers in October, and then you gave us a set of numbers now. Overall, including your nursing home losing thirteen patients between that, those two set of numbers, in our county, the occupancy rate of the nursing homes have gone up by three percent. So fifty-five percent occupancy rate in October, fifty-eight percent occupancy rate now. If you back out his poor-performing nursing home, sixty-two percent occupancy rate in our nursing home, seventy percent occupancy rate without his nursing home included. If you back, if we, for some reason, believed that the thirteen people left his nursing home and went somewhere else in Champaign County, which is probably not true, but just if we wanted to say that that's what happened, sixty-seven percent occupancy rate in Champaign County, which is, means that overall, since we last got his numbers in October, the occupancy rate in the nursing home in Champaign County have increased by five percent, excluding his nursing home. If you, so, 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 or I'm sorry, have increased by eight percent. If we sort of take his law, the loss that he had in, to effect, is five percent. So when you think about that, if you, if you want to think about that, we, we know that during the pandemic, the occupancy rate of nursing homes went down, right? And just since October to now, we've seen, in any way, shape, and form, however you want to look at it, an increase in occupancy rates in nursing homes, right? So while I do understand that his particular nursing home is, is quite a bit under, you know what I mean, underperforming, if, I want us to understand this reality. If we vote to close his nursing home, and it is not, no longer run as a nursing home, and if just this kind of trend, and I've looked at the national trends and how nursing home rates dipped during the pandemic, and they're slowly climbing up to what had been the average beforehand, you know, we've, we've had a lot of conversation here about baby boomers. We are voting to ensure that people that are from our county will not be able to find a bed in our county. And that is just reality. Now, I'm not saying that it's a better alternative to have this nursing home in our county, because we've heard what other people have said about how it's operating. And clearly, when almost every other nursing home on the list, except for Clark Lindsay, has increased, so just, so Country Health had sixty-eight people the last time he was before us, seventy-six, seventy-six on this chart. Alina Heritage had thirty-eight, it's up to fifty-one. Champaign-Urbana Nursing Home had a hundred and nine, it's a hundred and twenty. Clark Lindsay went from thirty-three to thirty-four. Every other nursing home in our county during this time had an increase in occupancy rate, except for the nursing home that we're talking about today. And I think that that's important to note. If we're going to have this conversation, I think it's important to think about what is our duty as county board members to ensure we told our constituents that if we sold this nursing home, there would continue to be nursing home care available for them in our county. That was the argument we made to our constituents. And I personally have, and we said that for ten years, we were holding him to that commitment. Other nursing homes in our county have made strides in improving their occupancy rate. And my question is, how have they been able to do that, right? How has Alina Heritage been able to go from sixty-three percent to eighty-five percent in the same amount of time where the nursing home we're talking about today saw an opposite trend, right? And so, so even if all of them moved, they're still, even if all of them moved, which I don't think we have any evidence that that's what happened, we, they still improved beyond that, right? Even if all of them moved, they still improved beyond that.
I'm sorry, can I respond, comment, or?
Sure.
Thank you. I certainly can't speak as to the occupancy, but I want to make it very clear that you're not voting to close the nursing home. That's my decision, and our decision, that we, again, that we can make. We have a, we have an agreement, a provider agreement, and we can choose to submit a closure plan. It is true. Again, I'm, I'm going to be clear, it's a technicality, but it's a pretty important one. You can keep the restriction on, and I will be stuck. If that's, I, I am begging you not to do that, because it will cause incredible economic loss for me. But that's what I have to deal with. I'm going to have to be the, you know, that's what I have to deal with. And so I'm asking, you are correct, I can't speak to anyone's occupancy trends, I can tell you that I'm sure that my, our being here in October and getting rejected was probably had something to do with the results, because people in the community figured the facility is going to close. So again, I won't speak to the specifics, but that's probably a good answer, and I want to be very clear that you're not voting to close the facility, you're voting to allow a deed restriction, which will allow me to close it in the way that I would like to. Otherwise, I'll be forced to do it either way, or I'm concerned that I will be forced to do it. I want to say it like that. My clinical consultants and my operational consultant have both recommended that. So, thank you.
Okay, actually, Diane, I'm going to actually get to you after Jenny, because Jenny never actually got to ask her question, I'm so sorry.
I see her gesticulating.
Jenny, and then Diane.
Sorry, I, yeah, I had a question that I was asking to figure out how many available beds would be left in the county, so that I could phrase my question. Having, and I spoke about this with, was it you who was in, here in October, and the person who was here with you. I have a family member who was released from months in Carl to a rehab facility, she was actually at the one in Savoy, but still needed to get to dialysis three days a week. Now, we're looking at greatly reduced beds available in Champaign County. Not everybody who's in nursing is in long-term, you know, some people just needed for the three weeks or whatever that my family member was there. I, the idea of having to have her commute to her dialysis center in Champaign three days a week, nursing centers don't provide this transportation all the time, this would have been my family driving there at least one way, because I know that from looking at nursing care, there's maybe two days a week that they offer services to get you to doctor's appointments. You're, you're, I, I'm just making sure we understand the hardship that's being placed on families when asking them, like, it's the same thing with the jail that we were talking about. We're asking people to have to commute these long distances to be able to take care of their family members. And I'm asking, what, what do you propose for these, these, these beds being reduced to this minuscule amount available for people who need greater care and greater access? Like, what are we left with in Champaign County after this, when there's twenty-five beds left?
So a couple of, a couple of points, and, and your point is actually very relevant to me, because if my father was here, he would give you the, a life in, you know, a day in the life of a dialysis patient. And it was, and it's, it's tough. I will tell you that facilities are putting in in-house dialysis, which is a point that I want to make. I believe that a facility such as a C U N R that is full will be newly profitable, will be able to invest, will be able to provide these services. I'll also tell you that there is a, there is a state law that says you can have ten percent, or ten, ten percent, or ten beds, I believe whichever is less, that can be added every two years. So I believe that with full facilities, the economic relevance and the economic ability to invest in facilities doesn't exist right now. The occupancy that you talk about, whatever, fifty-eight, sixty-two, all those facilities losing money. Pandemic, none, they're losing money. And I have the cost reports, and we can go look at them. I mean, that's why they closed, and that's why they're currently just barely breathing. This, unfortunately, let me be clear, this isn't a good thing, this is a best-of-bad-choices world. This, unfortunately, let me be clear, this isn't a good thing. This is a best of bad choices world. This allows those facilities remaining to be sustainable, economically sustainable. So they can actually continue to exist, and they can invest in their product, in their people, and in their patients.
I will, I will just add that at this time, at the time we were looking, it was only Clark Lindsay that had onsite dialysis, and that was not recommended for my mother-in-law due to her schedule. We would still have to have taken her off-site. So, it's not an option for everybody.
Diane?
Kind of along the lines, no matter what happens, one way or another, we still have patients that we want to care for, and we want to have them in a, a good place where they can get proper care. I know that many of these facilities will only take so many private pay, Medicare, those type of things. That's what I'm kind of worried about, is of our payer mix, will we be able to find them a proper place? And I'm probably most familiar with Country Health out in Gifford and a little bit of Clark Lindsay, that will there be the room for them? And like Stephanie said, you know, there, we're an aging population here, so we don't want to fill them up to the top.
So, I looked at these statistics, you know, the 570, whatever, the 576 down to 223, and I honestly was, I myself was, I mean, not like I'm, no, I was floored. What I would tell you is, I've heard this, this story of, you know, where, where private pay, if, if a resident has a payer source, private pay, Medicare, Medicaid, insurance, there is a bed for them. Notwithstanding what I just said, if you have a patient that has a severe psychiatric diagnosis, that is a patient that, we have geriatric patients, we have dialysis patients, we have short-term rehab patients. We do not want to mix your psychiatric patient or somebody with a primary diagnosis of psych with that. But if it's someone here, or their loved one, who is, I would say, in the more traditional, long-term care, or rehab, stroke, LVAD, which is a, which is a heart issue, so on and so forth. It used to be hips and knees, but we'll, let's use that for rehab. Medicare, Medicaid, private pay or insurance, there is a bed for them. The issue is, can we medically take care of a patient? And again, there's that psychiatric diagnosis, which is an issue, or there's a potential for a patient who has a ventilator. Or, you know, and, and so payer source and medically appropriate. Within those bounds, every single one of these patients, and by the way, again, I have rules and regs that I have to follow. I can't just, I'm closing the building and, you know, put up a sign and, you know, I, I have to take care of them. I have to make sure that their staff there. I have to make sure, even if staff doesn't want to work, that I have to find people who will be there to make sure. And I will, of course, do that, because, like I said, this is about resident safety. So, I can assure you, I've, having been part, in certain other ways of other, the other situations where facilities are closed, we have a timeline, there's a timeframe, there's an ombudsman who's onsite immediately, and there's nobody who is going anywhere where it's not medically appropriate, that doesn't have a choice on their own and/or in conjunction with their family, whoever is, is in charge of their care.
I have Mala, and then Samantha, and then Stephanie.
Thank you. So I get that you're saying that there's a bed for them, but do you know what percentage of your patients are Medicare pay? And is that bed located in Urbana or Savoy or Champaign? Or is it in Gifford or Tuscola? Like, how far do these people have to travel if they're paying with Medicare versus private pay?
The Medicare patients are the most desirable, desirable patients.
Okay.
So, those people, number one, they won't have, there won't be a problem taking them. Number two is, those patients are typically, Medicare is 100-day stay, so.
I need to interrupt. I, I think she meant Medicaid.
Yeah.
So if you could answer it in the context of Medicaid.
Sure. So, I would imagine that we probably have, if we have 74, we probably have 50 to 60 Medicaid, mostly, it's mostly Medicaid. Again, I would submit that, again, I'm going to talk, not their patients, their people, but I'm, let's talk about money, because that's really what is going to be here, what we're talking about. So, you have a facility like CUNR, which has, is already paid for their administrator, they're paying for the building, they're paying for the electricity, so on and so forth, right? All the fixed costs. So to add these 50 patients, yes, they will need to add staff, but there is no question that at $250 a day, let's just use that number, times 50 is, I'll, I'll do it for you. $12,500 times 30 is, what, $375,000? $375,000 a month of additional revenue to that facility. They're all Medicaid, let alone if there's any Medicare. I promise you, there's not $375,000 of, of additional, marginal, if you will, right? Of food that accommodates those people, a CNA, activities, all of the staff and all of the fixed costs. So, that facility will actually be more than happy to take them, because they're going to have their fixed costs fixed, and they're going to have their variable costs of the additional staff that they have to hire, which they're willing to hire. That will be, so that will be a bottom-line boon for them, actually. You can probably guess that that's a 60% margin. Again, we have no margin until we hit a number where we're sustainable. And after that, it's a very high-margin business. Unfortunately, to get there, we actually have to hit higher numbers than we're currently all at in terms of occupancy.
Samantha?
I'm just, I guess, a little confused, because I thought you were going to sit there and say all the things that you've tried to do to make your, your staffing situation better, and I, I'm not hearing that. So, to me, it's like in your mind, you want to close the facility, not, you know, taking in, in, in concerns of the residents there. For one, I know for a fact, my mother was in your rehab in 2020. Not everybody accepts Medicaid, for one, here in, in Champaign and Urbana. And at that time, it was the Helia, and it was university rehab, okay? The Helia is no longer here. So, from my understanding, you're the only one that takes Medicaid. Is that not correct?
That is not correct.
Okay.
CUNR has Medicaid patients right now. And in terms of, I'm sorry, if I did not, if I missed it, I'm happy to talk about staff. We actually, as you, I'm sure, are aware, we have a union contract. We negotiated fairly with union. We still have a union contract. We still have employees from before the transition. And I actually have a wage grid of all the, of all of the staff. And I can tell you that the paid hourly average rates, again, there's percentage increases from 426 of 19, which was probably our first payroll, to, I, I didn't update it for today, but to, to late October of 2022. So, my effective rate for CNAs was up 57%. And I would add that this number that I have, the, the, you know, the, our payroll initially was $1398 for, for a CNA. I'm happy to, again, share this with all of you. The union minimum is $13. Our effective wage rate is $21.99. So, we have worked incredibly hard to find staff. This is an issue across, across all kinds of communities, urban, rural, Illinois, others. I mean, again, I, I was part of a national group, and they were talking about shortages. I said, just Google nursing shortage, you'll find it. Again, the American, I'm just, the American Society of Nurses. So, we've done anything and everything. We've brought in, unfortunately, agency. We've had, we've tried to hire with bonuses. We have tried. We have worked. We have gone over, above, and beyond. Because we want our own staff, not agency. Number one, they're cheaper. Number two, or sorry, number two, number two, they're going to provide better quality as a consistent staff member in my building who works for me, as opposed to an agency nurse, a traveling nurse, or, or CNA who's in Carl Hospital, and then they're in Danville, and then they're here. We've tried all that. We cannot find the staff.
So are you not accepting new patients?
At this time?
Yeah.
We will accept any patient that we can find staff for. We are, it's hand in hand. I don't want to take patients and not be able to care for them. That's, that's the, that's the one thing I don't want to do.
So that's a no?
No, it's a one patient. Of course we have new admissions. We've had new admissions, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephanie, and then me.
Oh, just real quick, because you know I love math, just a little bit more math. So I ran the math. The number of nursing home occupancy rate in our county has increased since the last time Mr. Rothner was here by 5.6% in five months. If we close this nursing home, and it's about 20, if we close this nursing home and that rate continues by the first quarter of 2024, we will be out of beds, out of all beds. We will be at 100% occupancy rate, and we would be out of beds. So, just another piece of math, the national average for, a good rule of thumb, for the amount of seniors that are in a nurse, that decide to go into nursing home care in this country, is about 4%. In Champaign County, that number would be over 1,000 people, given our current population. That means that there would be 600 potential people, if our county is going to fall within national average, that would be housed without of the county. So, I, again, I, I am not making the case that this needs to continue, because I think we can all agree it's been an unmitigated disaster. But it is clear that if we lift the restrictive covenant, the intent, if, if there wasn't an interest in restricted listening, the restricted covenant, this gentleman wouldn't be here. So he's interested in, in, so we should assume that it would close. And I am telling you that if that is, if you take that vote, you have to say to your constituents that you are taking a vote that means that in the very near future, there will not be a nursing home bed for everyone who wants one in our county. It is just basic, simple math.
I'm sorry, I have to respectfully, legally disagree with you. You're incorrect. I can, again, I, I don't want to make this argumentative. The facility can close. You are not at all, none of you, none of you are responsible. You clearly gave up that responsibility when you sold the building, on a whole host of levels. So you gave it up, and it was mine. And if you want to roll me over the coals, maybe I deserve it. I certainly lost enough money and enough sleep, and what happened, happened. You are not closing, none of you are closing the facility. You can tell your constituents that he closed the facility, because the demand wasn't there. I don't want to be the boogeyman or the straw man, but it's, it's on me. You are voting for a continued use for this building and for tax revenue. Again, I would love to wave my magic wand and have it be different. It's not going to happen.
All right, it's me, and then Ed. So I understand, and I'm, just as a reminder, yeah, we're not voting on anything tonight. When we do vote eventually someday, it will not be about whether or not we should close the nursing home. It's going to be about whether or not we should change this whole covenant. My question for you, I know, I know that the state has to come in whenever a nursing home closes. I know it's a whole process. Why haven't you started that? You're eight months behind on your mortgage, and you obviously don't want to run this nursing home.
It's probably the best question I'm going to get tonight. I don't have a good answer. I certainly was hoping that we could do this collegially. That's certainly what I came here to do in October. But it was very clear that there was a lot of frustration and anger. So, I'm coming to you now, because then, he didn't try hard enough, he didn't lose enough money, he didn't, whatever. I'm coming to you, and again, I think, actually, I, I think I've, you can, you cannot like me, you can whatever, you can all that good stuff. I think I have a pretty compelling case as to building my case up for certain things of, as to, here's what I've done, and here's why I'm at the end. And so the answer is, so I lost some more money. But I gave you the access that you so fervently, clearly let my lawyer and my employee know that you wanted. It cost me money, okay? But now I'm here to say, I can no longer. That's why. I did it because it was the right thing to do. Just like paying the payroll was a year ago and eight months ago, if it was up to me, and I didn't have a covenant restriction, I would have closed the facility millions of dollars ago. I will point out, my mortgage, I could have bought the building, just closed the facility the next day, and with the losses that we've incurred, paid for the building. That's how much we've, that's how much we've lost. So, the answer is, because, because I came here in October and I tried. And I tried to have a civil conversation, and the people that were here were driven out of the room. So, I waited, and I provide more evidence.
As a, as a follow-up question, how long does it take for the state to close a nursing home?
I believe closure plans are 60 days. Again, if there's a closure plan, you know, that's issued, and, and we don't, we don't want to do this, you know, again, I want to be very clear. My clinical consultant and my operational consultant have recommended that. I have to have, and I need buy-in from my staff, my administrator and my director of nursing. So my goal is, and my, again, I don't have vast experience with it, is to have everyone on board, and I'm sure I'll probably have to pay retention bonuses, because, hey, the facility's going to be down, right? This is going to be the census, so I'm not going to have a job, so let me go right away. So I'm going to have to pay retention bonuses to keep staff in the building. I can promise you that the ombudsman, and state surveyors, and all other parties, and regulatory agencies, they're watching. So, and we don't take that stuff lightly. And there are other, you know, buildings that you want to be involved in, you want to have a career. So, it's, it's hopefully a, you know, a process that you're working together with people. Again, we want to get, we want to, you know, get to a situation where patients, if there's 37 patients that could be accepted right away to this building, and their families agree, then one, you know, then we do that. If it's a longer process, and there's people who are hard at a place, or their families are harder to get in touch with, or they are more reluctant, then there's that process. But, again, it's, it's guided by regu, rules and regulations that I am familiar with, but I'm certainly not an expert in.
Thank you. Just one last thing before we go to Ed, and then Jenny. Oh, I'm sorry, and Mike, and then Eric. All right, write this down.
Can I ask you a question, actually? Your question?
Sure.
I'm curious, can you tell me your concern?
Well, I mean, that was actually going to be my follow-up. It wasn't really a question. It was really kind of a, I guess it was kind of a question. If I were eight months behind on my mortgage, and I was spending however many tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars every month for the past five months, and I know, like you know, that whatever way we ultimately, as a board, decide, you are closing this facility. I mean, there's nothing that we can do to change that. That's not our decision. It doesn't make sense to me that you haven't already started this process. It just doesn't make sense. You could have had this facility closed two months ago, and you would be saving however much money you're claiming to spend every month, which I don't need to see the receipts. They're your receipts. It just, it, it kind of makes my head hurt a little bit. So, that was all I had to say. Ed, over to you.
You've said, you openly admitted that all the other facilities are gaining in population and clients, but you are not.
I, I mean, I.
Is it because you don't have the staff to accept the new clients, or the clients aren't, there's no clients out there?
Well, again, I, I think it's probably, I mean, I think it's probably a combination. First of all, we, we, again, when there's a new admission to be had, we will take a new admission. And if there was more admissions, and in other words, there was one, you know, one every day, we would build our staff back up. So, we don't see those patients. Again, we're in the ACO with Carl. We are their preferred provider. That's, that's, that's number one. Number two is, I, I'm sure that being in this, being in this county board meeting in October was such that it, it certainly didn't help matters, because people drew their own conclusions.
I, I guess I just have one more comment. You keep throwing out Carl. They're not the only facility around that. They're not the only facility around that is looking for beds.
Right, OSF would be correct.
There, there are many others.
Correct, but in this area, in Champaign speci, I mean, it's, it's interesting. Where's, where's the OSF hospital?
Urbana.
Right. So, closer to the-
Danville.
Right. So, so Carl is the major hospital and I can tell you that OSF is a secondary, I mean, our primary source of referrals was Carl. We've of course gotten from OSF and from other places and we will continue to get from OSF, but the patient base is the patient base. I, I wish I knew more about it and I'm truly surprised by it, but the market has gone where it has gone, with or without me.
Jenny and then Mike and then Eric.
I, you, you keep talking about, you know, the, the meeting in October driving away patients, but I think if anything, that would have been your representatives doing that damage because they were very clear that this facility is going to close no matter what. And we, as a board in October, were trying very hard to convince you of the same things we're talking about today, that these beds are needed, Champaign County cannot be reduced further in what is available. And I was just doing a quick search here after Samantha's comment earlier, looking for, I guess, nursing home jobs in Champaign-Urbana. And I see them for other facilities. I see nothing for you. So I guess it's clear also that you have made your decision there. You're not looking to hire anybody? Is that what, you're responding to Ed as well?
That's, that's not true.
Okay, where do you post your job listings? Where do people find them? Because they're not in any of the-
I'm not directly familiar with. I have an HR director and I have a facility. But I, I, I want to, you know, your, your first point, you know, that, that, I'm sorry, you were saying that we did the damage. Okay, I will keep the facility open. Or sorry, the facility will stay open. Tell me how it's supposed to stay open. I, you, you asked, you want to know why? Now I have a good answer for you. Because of this passion, which I appreciate, I did it because I thought it would make you guys happy. You know, I know you don't believe me, okay, but I'm going to ask you another question then. So it should stay open and I agree with access. Let's go with it. I agree with access and the beds are needed. Fine, not, not going to argue with you. I just have one question. Who is going to pay for it? Certainly the county got tired of paying for it, but now that it's my problem, I should have an unlimited checkbook. I unfortunately, please God give me this power, can't raise taxes on people. I can't. But I would love to. If I had tax power, I could do that. If I was a hundred thousand dollars, I would just eat it. I can't. It's fine, I would do it. I can't.
Hey there. So a couple of different times you've mentioned the ombudsman, the ombudsman who just walks in and does things. How many times have you dealt with that process?
The closure process? Myself?
Yes.
Directly? Zero.
Your company.
We've been buyers of real estate, but I, I'm actually literally just called a colleague of mine and actually asked him for the expertise on closure plans. I called another, uh, our, uh, somebody who used to work in our office, who's now a representative of the trade association and asked him. So we're planning on finding, I mean, literally, that was today. We're planning on finding subject matter experts to help us guide through the process.
So ostensibly you're saying that your company has not been through this before?
Closures? Again, as a real estate buyer, yeah, but no, I've never, I've never, I don't believe I've ever submitted a closure plan.
Okay. Interesting. So for the two other nursing homes that were purchased by you and then closed in this county, that wasn't, it wasn't a closure plan in that case? That was because they were, there were no-
No, no, there were, no, no, there were closure plans. You're right, I apologize. There were, there were those closure plans. Thank you. We, um, we bought the Heartland building with the, we bought it as a package of facilities and we had the intention of shutting them down immediately because we had been there and we had seen that it was clearly, um, not a facility that was, unfortunately, it was old and not worth investing in. And, um, that was better suited to be a student housing, which it is. And the other facility was bought as part of a larger package and our tenant actually handed us the keys back. And once again, we continued to operate it until the losses were no longer sustainable. So I apologize. I've not personally been involved in closure plans, but we have some involvement in them, yes.
Okay. Because you're really, really a real estate company. What's the name of your company?
Altitude Health Services.
Okay. I, I feel like when you, when you came up, you represented yourself as somebody from, it said real estate in the title.
Yeah, I'm a number, I, I mean, I'm a manager of a number of different entities.
Okay, the one that you gave at the beginning.
I'm also a manager of University Rehabilitation Center.
Okay. Okay, interesting. All right, I'll go back and re, and watch the tape or people can if they want to.
Why is that interesting? What, what's so interesting?
Because you're in the real estate business.
I'm in a number of businesses. I'm in the healthcare business, the nursing home operations business.
Okay. Okay. It's just most of the things that we've seen in, in, in this county and are dealing with you is not that you're in the healthcare business or that you're in the nursing home business, from what I've seen. Just the, the closures of two and the, and the plan theoretically to close a third one was just, I just was, as I understand it, the-
If you'd like, I'm happy to share my operational involvement and other facilities that I own.
Well, no, it's fine. Okay, so the Heartland Healthcare on Springfield is now a, now a student high-rise. Heliya Healthcare on Mattis was recently sold and will be apartments ostensibly, so that was another good real estate deal there.
I'm sorry, I take issue with that.
I don't care if you take issue with that or not.
That's fine. I didn't make any money. I lost money. I lost money.
So you, you've mentioned many times that you have done many things to try to turn around the, the one remaining facility that you have here in this county. I went back and watched the tape from the last meeting when Board Member Furtado gave you a pretty, pretty good opportunity to, like, things that, that she just looked at from a step back look at other nursing homes and, and facilities and their performance percentages and things like that. And one of the things that, that she mentioned was that, that this facility could participate in the certified nursing assistant tenure and promotion payments program? Is that a program you're familiar with?
Yes.
And is, is, is this a program that has taken part in this facility?
No.
Okay. Is it one that you participate in and other facilities that you own?
Um, I don't believe so, no.
Okay. So I think in, in watching the last meeting and this one unfold, it's been, it's been curious to me, several people here have obviously mentioned the, the data that you've provided has obviously shows that everywhere else except for your facility is seeing a census increase. To the point where if this, if this facility was to close, you know, we're going to be at a detrimental number of beds left in this county. The curiosity I have is for, I mean, you've kind of made this a foregone conclusion for us and we just have to decide whether, as you said, we rake you over the coals or not on, on the deal. But you're going to continue to do this to other counties and in other places around the state and the country, I'm sure, because this is your business. And so I just-
I take issue with that.
I, again, don't care.
I understand, but I'd like to respond to that directly, please.
Oh, great.
Okay, by all means.
So I, I, just for, for the future folks who are going to maybe try to track down information about this or whatever, it, it seems pretty clear from the numbers that you're providing us that it is very, very possible for you and your operation to be doing a better job and matching the numbers that are happening here. It's been laid out for you at previous meetings. It seems to be something that other facilities have figured out and you are just not willing to do. I, I don't need the crocodile tears about pulling money out of your personal account to pay payroll. Business owners who follow trends and can actually do these things well, don't have to do that. So I just would like for the record to reflect for anybody who ever ends up, ends up watching this down the line when they're trying to figure out whether or not they want to get into business with you, I would recommend, wherever the camera is, that they not.
I have Eric, Emily and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Leah. We talked a little bit, you've talked extensively about how maybe you think things started to go bad in October. Basically in October, if I remember, your representatives came here and said, we're going to close the nursing home. You can blame the rest of it on us and maybe our reaction to that, but it was your request to be here to ask for the covenants to change, which effectively mean the nursing home closes, whether it's our decision, your decision, circumstance, we lose the nursing home. At the, what is about an hour ago now, you started off with some statistics about this decline of available clientele from fifteen years ago up until recently. You just started running this place three years ago. If you saw this fifteen-year trend of a decline of available clientele, you had to have a plan when you planned to buy the building to deal with that. Stephanie's pointed out multiple times that everybody else saw the same dip that we all saw in everybody's life during COVID and has now recovered from this dip except for you. So did you not, I don't need a long answer for this, but when you purchased the building as our only possible client, did you or did you not have a plan to deal with this, what seemed to be a trending downward slope? Was the plan to move the people from the other two buildings that you also bought at the same time all along? Or was the plan all along to bring us to this day here?
I had none of those plans. My thought process was that the, again, we're talking about a dip in those facilities from five hundred and seventy-six to two hundred and thirty-three. That's, sorry to use the word, it's, I don't want to say it's unprecedented. We've seen other consolidations in other markets, but never to the point that you're losing sixty percent of your patient base.
Okay, but you knew that. Well, okay. So, uh, this is a two-part question and I only have one more after this. Do you know why we put this covenant on this sale in the first place?
I'm sure it was because this was a, an important public asset.
Correct.
The sale was a controversial issue and you wanted assurances to make sure-
That to make sure we didn't lose a nursing home.
And other covenants as well. I mean, the, the union and the Medicaid patients, I mean, all, all covenants that I've seen in other, um, county nursing home facilities, including some that I still own too. Mr. Ingram's point.
So then why did you agree to the covenant three years ago?
Because I had, the market and the assumptions that I anticipated before were wrong.
So I think my end statement here is, what's going to happen here has a couple of paths it can take, the, the, in the way it's going to happen. And yes, I disagree when you say, we're not voting to close it because we're voting to change the covenant that closes it. It seems to me that either you're really terrible at doing this, worse than the county was when we did it and we thought we were pretty bad at it, or you had sort of a, a longer-term, but not quite as long as we had, plan for what to do with the property. Mike's right. Before we were sort of forced into agreeing to vote to sell, the reputation of your firm was well-known. It's part of why we put all the covenants in. You were the only person we had and we had a, a mandate from the sort of false majority of the board at the time to sell, so we were obligated to do that. You agreed to buy it despite what you seem to have a conflict of information here that you saw this trend was going poorly before you bought it or it suddenly just happened when you bought it. And you didn't address it, apparently as well as the other places in the county have. And in the end, we will lose this place, one way or another. How it happens is sort of up to what we do when we get around to voting on this. But the, the fundamental issue is you agreed to operate this, or the property to be operated as a nursing home for ten years. And it was very clear to all of us. What you've done over the past three years is your business because it's your business now. It's not our business, as you say, anymore, but our business to the people that talked to me before that vote and the people that will talk to me and are talking to me about this vote is that Champaign County needs nursing home beds. We would love to have them run by competent people. But, uh, we're going to have to sort out how we do that and apparently, one way or another, it will be without your contribution. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Eric.
I'm sorry, may I, may I respond to a point?
Sure.
Um, there seems to be this belief that I have this long arcing, arc, art plan of making money. Again, the math says that I lost money here. So if I had a plan to do that, I lost money. First of all, I, I certainly had no plan, no such plan. But I, I lost money. So your thesis of, I did this to make money, doesn't hold water. I didn't make any money and I didn't do this to make money. I was going to operate the facility to make money, but to buy it, to close it, doesn't make any sense. The value of facilities typically, typically facilities have value because they're licensed. Once they're unlicensed, they have no value. This facility happens to have value because I happened to find a buyer. Otherwise, it's going to, with, with a deed restriction and with no license, the facility's worth a fraction of, of what we're discussing. So this theory of, I have some grand plan and I'm going to make money is, is incorrect.
I'll respectfully disagree. I mean, everybody goes into business to make money.
It's just math.
You just didn't and maybe you can break even now.
No, I can't.
And, well, and that's up to you. So I still stand firm that the covenant was agreed to by both parties and should remain in place. And if that makes this an unviable piece of property for you, then hopefully it's viable for somebody else.
All right, thank you, Eric. We have Emily and then Jennifer, but first I just wanted, I didn't think this was going to be an issue, but I have to leave at eight fifteen. So at eight fifteen, if we're still talking about this, Ed, you're on point as the vice chair. Thank you. Emily and then Jennifer.
Thanks. I just have a quick clarifying question. Maybe you mentioned this or maybe you, I misheard. Have you personally, I thought you said that you had not, you had personally not accepted any compensation for, in taking that position.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Most of my questions have already been asked, so I'm just going to reiterate some of your own words. This has been most unfortunate to me. I'm the largest donor to public health care in this county because of the losses that your poorly-run company has suffered. You're happy to share your resources and all of, or you're happy to share all of the information you're referencing today. You've not shared it when you brought back the, or not-
It's right here. I'm happy to, if you want to enter into public record, I'm happy to do that. Including, including my financial statements. And the cost reports are publicly available.
Sir, I'm still speaking.
Please.
You presented the same plan that I watched from the peanut seats when I was just a citizen six months, or five months ago when you were here. It just appears as though you are respectfully playing chicken to get what you want and refusing to give us specifics about what you have done to find staffing, to improve the staffing so that you can take more patients, so that you can get more patients like the other facilities. And all the questions have been asked, so if you can't tell me specifically, can you tell me specifically how you've looked for additional staffing? Specifically, not, I've tried.
Sure. Referral bonuses, Indeed, online, at the facility site. I mean, I can also talk about-
Ms. Luxon just looked and she can't find any of those.
I did specifically look at Indeed as one of my lists, yes.
Okay, then I'm sure I can get you a list of, of that, but I'd also point out that, you know, I know that there was, you haven't mentioned the initiatives. I'm happy to talk about the initiatives that we've tried. We had a COVID lease, a COVID unit leased twice with Carl Hospital. We've offered them dialysis, we offered them cardiac, we offered them respiratory units. They made no promises of volume, but told us we're the number one referral source. We couldn't get our adult daycare license when we took over the facility because we had no prior experience. So that was kind of a Kafkaesque thing that was really interesting. We provided telehealth, we provided private rooms, we've consolidated units for optimal staffing. We provided pay increases over the union contract, we provided shift bonuses and shift differentials. We provided pay increases over the union contract, we provided shift bonuses and shift differentials. So I think there are a lot of things that we've actually done to encourage staff to stay, to promote staff, and to keep the facility as viable as we could for as long as we could.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Stephanie and then Chris, did you have a question? Can you go after Stephanie?
Thanks.
I just have one really quick question, because I think that, I mean, essentially what you're asking us to believe is that you're a good actor and that you're coming to us in good faith. So I just have a very, just a very straightforward question. The last time I spoke to you, did you know that your company had gotten another appraisal on the nursing home and were going to challenge your tax bill based on that appraisal?
Our tax bill hasn't been challenged.
I was at the hearing, I was, I testified at the challenge.
I understand. There's no, I can tell you that I actually have.
Well, you lost the challenge.
I talked to my, I talked to my real estate tax attorney, I have the final opinion. He actually told me that we're not challenging for next year also.
Yes, but you challenged for this last year.
We challenge every tax, every, we challenge our company.
But my question is, did you know at the time that we spoke the last time?
No.
You were unaware?
Yes.
That the company that was losing all of this money was challenging the taxes?
Oh, I'm sure we were.
Was in process.
Again, I'm sure we were. We, as a policy.
No, okay. Were you aware, the last time we spoke, that you were in the process of challenging the taxes on this facility? Yes or no?
I just want to see one thing. Hang on, please. I just want to look at the date of the determination. That's.
The determination probably would have been in December or January. We spoke in October. The taxes would have been due in September and June.
This is dated.
I could tell you the date of the appraisal, if you'd like to know.
I'm, I'm, no, this is dated the 24th. I actually, in response to our conversation, I actually asked my attorney. I mean, we, we spoke approximately October.
It was in October. The appraisal that you received was before that.
Okay. So I, I don't know what happened, but I do know that, at a point that I spoke to my attorney after that, he suggested that I not appeal my, my assessment.
Okay. To be clear, your taxes were due in September and June and September. You had an appraisal before we talked in October. When we talked, you represented to me that you were not aware that there was a, a, a challenge happening. You did challenge, because I had to testify at that challenge, and you lost that challenge. Were you aware, when we spoke in October, that that process was ongoing? Yes or no?
No.
Okay.
My attorney handles my tax appeals in all of my properties. And I'm not exactly familiar with where those, those hold specifically for dates.
And, and just to reiterate Emily's question, since purchasing this property, have you ever received salary or compensation personally from managing this property for time that you spent managing this property?
The answer is no, and I'm curious where you think that that happened. Are you going to show me the cost report where it says that?
Yeah, I mean, I could show you a, a, a cost report that you submitted.
Right, right. The cost report is a non-cash document.
Okay.
If you'd like me to go under oath, I'm happy to do it. I've never received any, not, not dollar one.
Okay.
It's a non-cash.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
Pardon me?
I'm going to just, we've been at this for a long time now. Let's wrap this up. Dr. Stower, if you had a question, you have not asked anything tonight, you go ahead, and then we're going to let Mr. Rothner go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lee Taylor. I, Mr. Rothner has offered to turn over certain documents, and I respectfully request that you submit those to the chair, either Ms. Taylor or Chair Patterson.
What would you like?
Whatever you, whatever you offered us.
Okay.
And.
And I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions that stem from those documents.
Well, I, I thank you. That'll give us an opportunity to kind of look, look at these perhaps in a little different light. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Rothner, for, I don't know. All right, we're going to move on to item D. We have the other business, the semi-annual review of closed session minutes, which everybody has reviewed. I believe Kyle, you have the wordage over there.
I move to follow the state's attorney's recommendation for all closed session minutes of the Justice and Social Services Committee remain closed.
Second, Mr. Esri. Any discussion that we would have to go into closed session to discuss? Nope, didn't think so. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. I do not have a chair's report. And I always forget this, and I have to ask every time. Does item D1 have to go on the consent agenda? No? Okay, thank you, Megan. Back to you, Chair Patterson.
All right, next we have policy personnel appointments. Chris?
Thank you, Chair Patterson. The monthly HR report, you know, can be found on pages 13 through 16. I'll simply say that we're making a minor dent in some of the unfilled vacant positions, and I encourage our board members to freely invite members from their own districts to it. We're especially short on court service officers, patrol officers, correctional officers, and part-time master control officers at the jail. These are very, very important positions, and I, and there's some that have been added. I sure hope that we can kind of help get our county up to staffing. Next item is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 960, establishing the Champaign County Personnel Policy. Someone would like to make that motion? Second, Jenny?
I'll second.
I, I was looking across. Thank you. And we got two Jennys. You may remember, we've looked at this before. This is mainly to bring us into compliance with state laws and, and current policies. Is, are there any questions or discussion? I guess we all got talked out. Hearing none. All in favor of, of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Appointments and reappointments, a resolution appointing Tawana Nickens to the Rural Transit Advisory Group, term ending December 31st, 2024. Diane Michaels moves.
Second.
Eric, Eric seconds. Thank you. Is there a discussion to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution appointing Tom Sexton as county board liaison to the Community Action Board, term ending November 30th, 2024. Is there a motion? Leah Taylor, thank you. Second, Jeff Wilson, thank you. Discussion to the motion. Tom, do you have anything to say? He's taken a vow of silence. Thank you. All in favor of, of the appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. There are a number of appointments, and, and there, many of them are in the packet. Most of them are for fire protection districts, we, and drainage. We haven't had, cemetery boards are yet to come up, I guess. But we do have some coming appointments to the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District Board of Review, farm assessment. I invite county board members to take a look at those because those will come up at a We have, and also applications for those appointments are found in the packet. The county clerk has issued their monthly fee report, and that's on page 47.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chris. It's really a repeat from last month, but I wanted to preface by reading a vision statement from the county board. "Our vision is to be a recognized leader in local government, where every official and employee has a personal devotion to excellence in public service and embraces the highest standards of ethics and integrity to serve the citizens of Champaign County. And one of the defining values listed below in our strategic plan is transparency." And the county code, which is referenced on this page, says the following. Section 3-2003. "Monthly report of financial status. The county clerk shall file a monthly report summarizing the financial status of the clerk's office in such forms as shall be determined by the county board." This does not look like to me as a financial status report. In fact, it's not even close to a financial status report. So I'm lodging, I guess, a complaint or a discussion item that I would like to see us follow our values as a county board and ask the clerk to go ahead and follow the law as stated in the statute.
Mr. Wilson, do you have a comparison, perhaps in a, another Illinois county that might serve as a, as a model of what you're looking for?
I love that question. But I did find one outside of our county, outside of the state of Illinois that had a very thorough financial status report for a clerk. But let's look at it this way. Money in, money out, beginning balance, ending balance, just like a bank statement. It can't be that difficult.
Have you, have you examined or spoken with the county auditor about, you know, what they, they issue in their reports that, that might kind of address some of your concerns?
I like that question also. Purpose of the auditor's job is to what?
Well, serves a bit of a controller, if you will.
Purpose of the auditor's job is to audit. The auditor doesn't generate financial reports, right?
Yeah, in fact, our, our auditor absolutely does not do an audit. Like, that's just not how it's set up.
Well, then, let me ask you this. If the auditor is doing the work of the county clerk as far as the financial status, then why not just put this on that page?
Okay. County Executive Steve Summers said that he'd like to address some of this, please.
I believe that the clerk made an error in citing which state code is to be applied in this case. It should have been 55 ILCS 5-3, 5 slash 3-2003.4. And Megan was kind enough to submit this to me. We just talked about this at the very end of business day, so I apologize for not having, having copies for you, but the two are significantly different in terms of what the clerk's office is citing as to reporting. I have a single copy of it here. I would be happy to distribute this to board members. I, at this time, I'm reluctant to have Megan run back and make all the copies, but I would happily get this to you tomorrow, and it's, I can, I can read it to you if you would like.
Steve, we could kind of continue the, or, or, Mr. Wilson, if it's agreeable with you, let, let, let's, if you want to wait until Steve sends out this, this new information and see if that addresses, you know, some of your concerns, would that be okay?
And, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. The county clerk actually has two sections in the code for his monthly report. One is the financial status report, and the second one is fees. So he has two, do, two reporting requirements, just like the treasurer has a reporting requirement. Just for your information, it's just the law.
Not disagreeing, and I'll, I'll make a point of speaking with the county clerk and the auditor and, and with county executive Steve Summers and, and so forth, and see if, see what, we can kind of determine that that might, that might be closer to, to what you like. But if you've, if you've seen something that you think, you know, I mean, the fact that you haven't seen something in Illinois that, that, you know, kind of may say something a little bit according to the way that we do things, and, which may differ from what other states do. I'm not trying to, to put you off, I'm just thinking that maybe that, that this information is found in a different place, or, or what you think you're looking for. Mr. Summers?
Before we close, I just want to point out this, Ms. Robinson found this error independently and took the time to make a single copy and bring this to my attention this evening. So she's doing a wonderful job for us, folks.
Ms. Robinson walks on quicksand. We'll, 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 we'll work on this, and you're right, we want to try to, to be transparent and open, and so that everybody has information that's available to them that's only proper. Okay, the fees report on page 47. We have item C1, Community Violence Protection Task Force Appointment, which was distributed in this little yellow packet here on pages eight to nine, and it is to appoint Mr. Tom Sexton to succeed Mr. Jim McGuire to the vacant position on the Community Violence Protection Task Force. Do I have a, a motion? Mr. Goss?
Moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay.
Ms. Lachin has seconded. Is there a discussion to the motion? Seeing no hands waved or voices, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passes. Semi-annual review of closed minutes has already been taken care of. I don't think that we need.
You need to do it for this committee.
Oh, we need to do it for this committee? Okay, well, Mr. Patterson, would you please proceed?
I move to follow the state's attorney's recommendation for all closed session minutes of the Policy Personnel Appointments Committee remain closed.
Second by Eric Thorzlin?
Michaels.
Michaels and then, as you say. No, it's okay. No fault, no foul. Okay. Discussion to the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion pass. Motion passes. Chair's report, I only, I, I just remind you of the opportunity for the microloans. I hope that if you have constituents that are looking to try, or would like to try to take advantage of, of some of these programs, they're, they're, this is a, a unique opportunity. The Justine Peterson is supposed to be a revolving fund, and that, so there's not a panic to get in, but this is an excellent opportunity for somebody that, or, or a group that would like to start a, a business and, and could use that business support. Designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda. Roman numeral eight, A2, 3A, 3B, C1, D1.
For the record, D1 doesn't go on the consent agenda.
One of these days, I'll get through this without correction, but thank you, Chair Patterson, back to you.
All right, next on the agenda is the Finance Committee.
First off, budget amendment and transfers, budget amendment, BUA 2023-02441, budget 027, 2075, Regional Planning Commission, Department 100, Regional Planning Commission, increased appropriations 683, 776, increased revenue same, to receive the 2023 Illinois Home Weatherization Assistance Program bipartisan infrastructure law grant funding.
So moved.
Mr. Goss is a motion, and sorry, Mr. Patterson, whoa, really wanted to be in on that one second. All the, discussion? Mr. Ingram?
The first and the second were bipartisan, too.
Nice. I try, I do try. Any other discussion? Mr. Stower?
My brother headed up this sort of program in central Iowa, and this saves a remarkable amount of money and provides a great deal of comfort to, to people living in, in, in homes which, which need this weatherization service. And I, I just think it's grand that we can do this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If it's okay with you, the next several I'm gonna take as one motion, since they're all part of the same grant. Budget amendment for AOIC grant, budget amendment, BUA 2023-0358, Fund 1080, General Corporate, Department 031, Circuit Court, increased appropriations and revenue $8,814. BUA 2023-0350, Fund 1080, General Corporate, Department 036, Public Defender, increased appropriations and revenue $6,340.49. Budget amendment, BUA 2023-0354, Fund 267, Court Document Storage, Department 030, Circuit Clerk, appropriations and revenue $79,981.68. Budget amendment, BUA 2023-0355, Fund 2613, Court Automation, Department 030, Circuit Clerk, increased appropriations and revenue $52,323.42. Budget amendment, BUA 2023-0353, Fund 2630, Circuit Clerk, Operation and Administrative, Department 030, Circuit Clerk, increased appropriations and revenue $4,301. Reason for all of the above, appropriation for the Administrative Office of Illinois Courts to grant support, tech modification improvements, and the specifics of each of these projects are provided. First, Mr. Ingram, second, Lorraine, Ms. Cart, second. Discussion? Mr. Wilson? Oh, no, I've already got that, I've already, Lorraine, third, third. We, we, they're, they're sorry, we don't have a bronze medal in this competition. Mr. Goss?
Yeah, I told Mr. Wilson, the reason he's confused is, I said, I thought I'd vote no, just so you'd have to reread these at the County Board meeting, but I won't do that, see, 'cause you'll turn that around on me one of these days.
Maybe I'll just be absent. Any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up is the Treasurer's report. I wanted to point out that the Treasurer's monthly reports are now online, I checked this morning, through December, and she is working on the January and February one. The investment reports were a new thing, which are a new kind of thing that we're gonna be putting online, are done and have been submitted to IT, but IT hasn't had them up yet. I, our website is the kind that it takes a minute to do things, and I think because this is a new report, it's, they have to, like, actually put a landing spot for them, but those are done, they are submitted. Mr. Wilson, I'm sure you'll enjoy reading them, 'cause they're, like, this thick. I've seen one of them printed out, and it's, it's massive. The, but I think it's a good thing for us to, to be able to look at how we're doing investment. It's, it's something the board hasn't looked at too much. Auditor's reports, you could see there, I'm gonna give it to Mr. Patterson, 'cause I don't know how to do this closed session thing.
I move to follow the State's Attorney's recommendation to open the minutes of February 13th, 2018, and for all other closed session minutes of the Finance Committee to remain closed.
Mr. Esri, second. Somebody else? Oh, you moved it, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Wilson, third. Discussion, if, if, remember, we have to go to closed sessions, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, items to be, I have no Chair's report, items to be put on the consent agenda, Finance, A1, 2A, 2B, 2C, 2D, and 2E. Back to you.
All right, seeing no other business, I call this meeting adjourned.